Public meeting of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. My name is David Weiner, I'm the Chair. Before we get started, I've asked Mr. Costin to lead us in prayer. And we have a dual pledge by Commissioner Oliver and Commissioner Horsley. Please stand.
Eternal God our Father, we thank you for this glorious day which you have made. God, we thank you for your many benefits. Now, God, we ask that you would look on this meeting, God, as we come to conduct business, God, that you would give us wisdom and that you would lead us and direct us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To your republic, with its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, I ask Mr. Redmond to introduce the members, please. Mr. Redmond.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. Welcome, everyone. I'll start over here on this side of the dais. That's Kay Wilson. She is a deputy city attorney and she handles planning matters and handles them very capably and we always appreciate her work. Next to her is Mr. John Costin. John is a retired fire captain and he serves at large. Next to John is Robin Klein. Robin is a social worker and she represents the Centerville District. George Alcaraz is a contractor, a developer, and a business owner and he represents the Beach District. Dee Oliver, she also has a bunch of different jobs. She is in the funeral business, she's an author, I'm going to leave out 10 or 20 of them, but in any event, she does quite a bit. She is a past chairman, she is a past vice chairman, and she serves at large. Mr. Horsley. Donald Horsley is a farmer. He serves at large. He's our longest-tenured member and he's represented the Princess Anne District for many years. He's typically the smartest guy here. In the center of the dais is Mr. Weiner. David Weiner represents the Kempsville District. He is our current chairman, he is a former vice chairman as well. He's a contractor, I mean, he is a salesperson in the building industry. Next to David is Jack Wall. Jack is an engineer by trade. He represents the Rose Hall District. He is also our vice chairman. And what did I miss? Rose Hall, right, okay. This fellow, Mike Edman, is not here today. He's an attorney. He serves at large. He's also a very capable fellow and a good friend. My name's Dave Redmond. I'm a commercial real estate broker licensed in Virginia and North Carolina. I represent the Bayside District. This is Whitney Graham. He is, he does a bunch of stuff, too. He's a broker, he's a developer, he's a manager of properties. He represents the Lynn Haven District. David Bradley is a retired city employee. What are you doing now? Anything more than that or you just kind of?
I'm enjoying retirement.
He's enjoying retirement.
Doing this?
He's enjoying retirement. He now represents the Princess Anne District. And I think this is David's second meeting, so everybody go easy on him. Next to him is Bobby Tahan. Bobby is the planning director and he has a number of very capable staff with us whom he will now introduce, Mr. Tahan.
Thank you, Mr. Redmond. Clerk, in today we have Pam Sandloop and Nicole Carita, who we are blessed to have had the opportunity to permit to Planner One recently. Also with that, with the current planning staff, we do have Boadao, our current planning manager, planning evaluation coordinator, and Marshall Coleman, our two new planners in the group that have also joined, Elizabeth Noack and Michaela McKinney. Sorry, I always, it doubles me up and I always forget. We have Tori Eisenberg, who's also with the City Attorney's Office that's with us. And we also have Tasha Martinez, who is assisting you all with your FOIA issues with your tablets right now. So I believe that is all for our staff.
Thank you, Mr. Tahan, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Next, we're going to ask Madam Clerk to undergo the roles and explanations of today's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It's equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the commission with respect and civility. We request that if you have a cellphone to either silence it or turn it off. Following is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set is located in the front of the Planning Commission Agenda. The Order of Business for this public hearing, withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent Agenda. Second Order of Business is a consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. Regular Agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. When an agenda item has been called, we will recognize the applicant or the representative first. Following the applicant or representative, registered speakers will be called next. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak unless they are solely representing a large group such as a civic league or homeowners association, in which case they will have 10 minutes. Please note that the actions taken today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the City Council. The commission thanks you for your attendance and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, does anybody have any items to be withdrawn or deferred? Please come forward. None. The Chair has been told that item number three will be deferred for 30 days. Does anybody have any objection to that being on to be withdrawn for 30 days? None? Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we defer agenda item number three for 30 days.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Wall and a second by Mr. Horsley?
The vote is open. Mr. Wall? Oh, thank you. By recorded vote of 10 in favor, zero against, agenda item number three has been deferred for 30 days.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we're going to the consent agenda. Vice Chair Wall will take over.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These are applications that are recommended for approval by staff. And the Planning Commission concurred and there are no speakers signed up in opposition. We have one item on the consent, on the regular consent agenda today. That item is Virginia Beach Distilling LLC, which is the applicant, and the owner is Oceana Crossing LLC, for a conditional use permit for craft distillery at 1375 Oceana Boulevard, Unit 142. Is there a representative for this item? Okay. Is there any opposition for this item to be placed on the consent agenda? Hearing, none. The Planning Commission has asked Mr. Alcaraz to read this into the record.
Sure, thank you. You don't want to wait? You want to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. Just making sure. Agenda number two, conditional use permit for a craft distillery. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to open a craft distillery in Unit 142 of the shopping center along Oceana Boulevard Zone B, Condition B to Community Business District. The property contains a craft brewery as well that was originally granted by City Council in 2018 and recently approved this summer for an expansion. An open air market for food truck was also part of that request. The 6,933 square foot craft distillery proposes to produce and sell vodka. The unit will be divided in 2,282 square foot for the production area and 4,651 square feet for the tasting room, patio, and office space. No changes to the existing building will be proposed, are proposed. The hours will be from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM Wednesday through Saturday and 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM on Sundays. The proposed application for a conditional use permit for the craft distillery is, in staff's opinion, is acceptable. The business is in keeping with the policies and goals set forth in the comprehensive plan and its guiding principles of supporting and sustaining great neighborhoods with complementary non-residential uses. Consistent with the existing approved conditional use permit on this same site for the craft brewery, conditions are recommended that prohibit live outdoor music to ensure no disruption to the nearby residences. With that being said and the conditions stated in the report, we put it on consent agenda.
Thank you. The Planning Commission also placed the following applications for a conditional use permit for short-term rental on the consent agenda, as they meet the applicable requirements for Section 241.2 of the zoning ordinance. Staff and Planning Commission supports the applications and there are no speakers signed up in opposition. These include agenda item, or application number four, C.W. Kent, and number five, Peter Yordanov Popov. Mr. Chair, that was the last item on the consent agenda, or these were the last items. I move for approval of, on the regular consent agenda, agenda item number two, and on the short-term rental agenda, number four, and number five.
Mr. Redmond.
Mr. Chairman, I have a disclosure to make. I will be voting in support of the consent agenda. However, I will be specifically abstaining from agenda items number four and five, dealing with short-term rentals. I have a letter on file with the City Attorney's Office. As a matter of policy, I abstain from all short-term rental applications individually and also from any ordinances that might apply. Short story is, I have a small client in the travel industry.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Wall. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Horsley for the consent agenda?
Vote is open. By recorded vote of 10 in favor, zero against, agenda item number two has been recommended for approval by consent. By recorded vote of nine in favor, zero against, with one abstention, agenda items number four and five have been recommended for approval by consent.
Thank you, ma'am. I would say we'd wait for everybody to leave the chamber, but there's nobody to leave, so we can continue.
Our only agenda item today is agenda item number one, Schaefer Construction. It's an application for a conditional use permit automobile service station on property located at 152 Newtown Road, 5790 Princess Anne Road, located in the Kempsville District.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Vice Chair, members of the commission, for the record, my name is Rob Beaman. I'm a local land use attorney with the Troutman Pepper Law Firm, here today on behalf of the applicant, Schaefer Construction. This application involves the redevelopment of the commercial site located Newtown Road and Princess Anne Road in the Kempsville District. This was formerly the site of a BP gasoline station and a small commercial strip center, which is actually still on the property. As this site is located in the Newtown SGA, we've worked hard with staff over the past several months to make sure that this is an attractive addition to this corridor. To that end, the applicant has flipped the orientation of the building from what you typically see with a gas station. Here, the building would be up against the corner on the right-of-way and the gas pumps would be in the rear. Additionally, we've added some articulation to the rear elevation with some glazing and some, an entryway feature that you can see on the elevation to kind of dress up the back to make it more like, look like a front elevation. And then finally, we've added additional landscaping and birmingham at the corner and along both rights-of-way to really accentuate this property as a gateway to the city. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we will be closing three of the existing five access points on the property to kind of consolidate access and make for a safer, more efficient traffic pattern. We are leaving open two access points, one on each right-of-way. For all these reasons, we believe that this use will be an attractive addition to this corridor and is in keeping with the Newtown SGA plan. I did speak with Ms. Turner, Donna Turner, who's a representative of the Commercial Condo Association located to the east of the property. And as a result of that conversation, I wanted to put a couple of things on the record for you today. First, my client is willing to add a fence. Right now, we're showing a landscape buffer between the two uses. We're also agreeable to add a fence and we will be modifying the site plan between Planning Commission and Council to reflect that fence. And then additionally, there was a question from Ms. Turner regarding the access from, the egress from the commercial condo up to Newtown Road through the 7-Eleven site. We are not intending to block that off and we'll make that clear on the site plan if we need to between Planning Commission and City Council. I do understand that Ms. Turner is here to express some questions and concerns from the association and we look forward to continuing the conversation with her and the association even after today. So with that, appreciate y'all's time and consideration and we'll stand by for any questions.
Any questions? All right, we'll talk with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have two speakers calling Donna Turner.
Hello. Is it okay to take my mask off?
Sure is.
Okay, I am vaccinated.
Thank you.
Okay. So, good afternoon, commission and everyone who is here. I do have handouts that will describe what I am going to be talking about. I am representing the Newtown Professional Park Owners Association. We are a Virginia-
If you wanted to hand them over there, if she could send them around to us, if you'd like to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. As I said, I am representing the Newtown Professional Park Owners Association. We are a Virginia condominium and we are governed by the laws of Virginia. We have a board of directors consisting of a president, a treasurer, secretary, as well as one additional director. That additional director is me, the lucky stucky. So, as you get the handout, I would like to take a second or two to introduce myself the same as you did. I am a 49-and-a-half-year retired veteran of NASA Langley Research Center and a couple of other federal installations. I am also not an engineer and so I hope you will have some level of tolerance for whatever it is that our owners have asked me to report to you. The Newtown Professional Park is consisting of 14 individually-owned office condos. Each office condo is governed by the Virginia condominium laws and all of us have come together to express some concerns as well as questions. We neither oppose or approve or support this project and we do not-
I'm sorry, I just want to get my, I just ask, just for clarification, are you next door to this? Where are you?
East, so behind the news site.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So, we are the two U-shaped buildings?
Okay, thank you. I didn't know where you were. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
All right. So, let me just kind of jump into this. And again, we have, I have a list of concerns and questions and they are an amalgamation from all of the owners. The first thing that is on page two, the concern is that the placement of the underground gasoline tanks along the north side of the NPP property. We feel like that is problematic in that it inhibits access by fire protection officials and fire vehicles. Also, placing the underground gasoline tanks so close to our property line may lower our property values due to the hazardous materials, i.e. gas, stored in these underground tanks and the potential emission of biohazardous vapors. This is well-known in gas stations and service stations and it is benzene. And so, we are very concerned about that. For each of the concerns or questions we have, we have a recommended solution. And where necessary, I have put a footnote in to describe where I am getting this information from about benzene releases and fire concerns and so forth. So, that is our first concern about the placement of the gas tanks. Now, I will tell you that our owners had some aesthetic input in terms of, we want blue and not red, or we want trees and not bushes, or whatever. Those are in here. It is up to you to take into consideration these aesthetic recommendations, but where there is a safety or any kind of proposal that may inhibit our ability to continue to conduct business in a productive way that will make our clients feel comfortable, that is in here also. Concern number two has to do with the location, the proposed location of the three dumpsters. Those three dumpsters are sitting right directly in front of the entrance to Building A, which is at 156 Newtown Road. And on this diagram, the words dumpster enclosure is written right on top of Building 156. And that building has all of the A units, from A1 to A7. And what we would like to ask is that those dumpsters be relocated. I don't think any of you would want to willingly have dumpsters sitting at the front entrance of your, of your building or place of employment. We're very concerned about the ongoing problem with rodents, particularly Norway rats, in the Kempsville area. And so, we know that, because we have a dumpster, we know that mitigation of pests, rodents, flies, smells, and picking up trash, making sure that things look attractive, is an ongoing concern with convenience stores. We know that. We have a dumpster and we know what that can be like. Again, we have a recommended solution to perhaps move the dumpsters either to the Princess Anne roadside or closer to the new proposed 7-Eleven building. Concern number three, we think may have been addressed. The entrance to our professional park from Newtown Road is a one-way entrance in and it is sitting right next to the entrance into the newly refurbished old Chartway Federal Credit Union building. I think that's what everybody refers to it, where the drone-up offices are now. So, our entrance on Newtown is a one-way entrance in and we were very concerned about the appearance that the, there would be no exit onto Newtown Road. But as Mr. Beaman has explained, the exit will be through the 7-Eleven parking lot and back out onto Newtown. We do not prefer that. We prefer that our exit remain where it is, but we believe that if that is not possible, we can probably live with it. We will be unhappy, but we can probably live with that. Concern number four has to do with building line and setback regulations. Now, Mr. Beaman shared that the city planners worked very closely with the applicant to come up with this particular site plan and that the recommendation is that the rear of the building be on a slant and that it face the entrance or gateway into the city of Virginia Beach. That appears to be a little bit odd to us. First of all, because it is not following what we understood to be setback rules or any other current building line regulations as established by the city planning department. So, we're a little bit confused about that. Aesthetically, we have ideas about how that could be better, but again, it is aesthetics. And we believe that perhaps if the entire thing was flipped, where the building back faced our building and the pumps faced the intersection of Newtown and Princess Anne, might look a little better. Again, I will say aesthetics. Number five, we believe that we may have gotten an answer about that. We know now that there will be fencing and there will be soft scape plantings as well as some type of brick, short or low brick wall. We are concerned about trash mitigation. We are concerned about whatever it is that we need to do to keep our area clean and neat. Number six is access and circulation. Again, there is a strong recommendation from the staff that this be a walkable area and that there be bike racks and that there is an outdoor seating area for eating outside and lots of pedestrian walking traffic. We are and will continue to be alert to whether or not pedestrians or people who are driving may find not a parking space on the site and then come around and park into one of our parking spaces and walk over to the convenience store. Number seven, parking areas, same thing. Number eight, landscaping, we may have a answer to that. Number nine is access to the sites. We've talked about that and we believe we would in fact prefer to have the current access out onto Newtown Road.
I'm not going to cut you off, but I'm going to just start, go ahead and take your time, just start wrapping up since you're-
Okay. So, number 10 on here is that we have no comments about natural features, stormwater management, lighting, or signs.
Oh, that was great. Well, thank you. You seemed very thorough here. Any questions?
Mrs. Turner, I have a question for you. I'm on Google Maps and currently, there's a strip, or there was a strip mall, between you all and the, I guess, the BP gas station that was there at one point. Is there, I'm getting a nod, yes. So, it doesn't, other than, it looks like your parking lot just sort of, you all parked against that back strip mall.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. And that is partly why we are concerned about a couple of things. At one time into the, just until the recent past, there was the Virginia Winery located in that strip building. And while it was nice to have a winery close by, it was difficult for winery patrons to find it or access it or figure out how to get in there. And so, we would often have numerous cars parked in our parking lot and people would walk around to, onto Newtown, onto Princess Anne and walk around and find the winery entrance there.
And can you tell me about where, because I know you are concerned about the location of dumpsters and I don't see them on Google Maps. Where you, you all have your dumpsters on?
Can I walk over and-
There's a pointer right there.
Over there.
Right here? Okay.
It should work.
It's on the ceiling. There you go.
Okay. So, this is our building. This is the B building and our dumpster is right here, all the way in the back. And there is a driveway back here, even though you see a lot of tree overhanging, there is a single-lane driveway back here.
Okay.
And that empties out onto Princess Anne.
Okay. Thank you.
Jack?
You talked about your ingress and egress from the site and I think I followed it somewhat. But can you, can you describe that a little bit more, you know, the existing pattern and what you're trying to achieve or what you would like to see?
Yes. Yes. So, right now, when you come off of Newtown, you come in right here and you are able to turn in right here. And this is a one-way in. If you want to go to the old Chartway building, you take the same entrance and go this way. Okay, is that, okay. So, when you want to egress out onto Newtown, you come back through the parking lot and the exit onto Newtown is right here, because this is a one-way, one-lane in. And this is a two-lane out or in to get back onto Newtown. So, we're really concerned about, first of all, having to go onto the property of the 7-Eleven to, to exit. And our clients are probably going to be concerned about that, because the only other exit out is here onto Princess Anne and this would necessitate, because there is a median, it would necessitate a right turn to go to the light, to turn right, to go wherever they're going.
But I think that, has the, it's proposed that there's still going to be access now to that, that entrance off of Newtown.
Okay. So, this entrance will be here, but it's a one-way in. It is not out. It is a one-way in. And what we're being told is that to get out onto Newtown, we have to drive onto the 7-Eleven property and go out right here. Now, our current exit is right here, where this little symbol is.
All right, thank you.
So, where the current exit is, is that on the property of the little retail strip center?
It is an easement that is shared by both and it has been in- It is an easement that is shared by both, and it has been in place for just about 50 years.
Okay, so you have an easement there.
Yes, and the easement is shared. Yes.
Gotcha.
So, they're going to maintain that easement, just shift it, just shift it down to that, the one that's a little bit further south.
So, you'll, so you have an easement, you'll still have an easement? Is that...
My understanding is that if one of the people, businesses, whatever, who shares the easement, has to get permission from the other easement owner. So, the easement, and my understanding is that it is co-owned by the Covington Building people, the people who own that, and the Newtown Professional Park.
Gotcha.
And so we have not gotten, and maybe that's something that's coming, but we have not received any kind of request to modify the easement or change it in any way.
I'm assuming that, that the, you know, where you have ex, where you have an exit now and where you have an entrance from New, off Newtown, it seems like they're very close together.
Yes, they are.
Probably, I would assume traffic probably didn't want them that close together, is my guess.
That could very well be.
Safety thing.
It could very well be. So, but the point is, we are being asked to drive onto someone else's property to exit, rather than use our portion of the easement.
Gotcha. Okay.
And again, it could be that the easement request or whatever has to happen, will happen. It has not happened yet.
Okay.
I've got a question for staff real quick. Mr. DeHaan, that existing easement, shared easement, is that recorded somewhere, or is the owner just being kind enough to let them use that exit?
I think it may be best to ask Mr. Beeman to see what legal easements exist.
Okay, no problem. I understand.
I will confirm for Mr. Graham that they are currently driving over the existing property of, of the Covington, a property to that exit. As typical, as Mr. Graham noted, the location and proximity of that one entrance to the other existing entrance, which services multiple properties, is of concern, which is why traffic engineering has that one closed during this redevelopment and requires the shifting away to have the proper distance.
And that was when, when we were on site actually discussing this with, while, that was my main concern, is that, wow, you're going to still keep that opening, and they're very close to each other, and traffic engineering is still allowing that, since they're still too, still very close.
Well, not the, not the closest one, but the further one.
The further one is, yes, correct. Okay. Any other questions?
We, and I want to say about that, we would be okay with some other arrangement. We just want to be able to exit onto Newtown, as well as exit onto Princess Anne. So, whatever it is, it certainly can work out to be to everyone's advantage, and we're not hard over on keeping what we have. We just need a safe Newtown exit.
What, what kind of businesses are in there?
We have accounting businesses, attorneys. Some of you may have seen the escape room facing Princess Anne Road. We have the, a ambulance, private ambulance business, another accountant, we have another attorney, so mostly professional services.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I just have one. It just seems also, just, this is just a general statement, that it, it seems like it's going to be more open, you know, with the strip mall gone, meaning that it'd be more visible.
Well, 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 what Mr. Beeman just told us is that there will be a six-foot fence all the way across the entire perimeter, as well as softscape that will grow to approximately 15 feet and be dense. So, it will be more open, but not, and more attractive, rather than looking at the rear of a building, so...
And I had, I had to say, I, I live in Carolin Farm, and from what's been there for the last 20 years I've lived in Carolin Farms, this is going to make it look more attractive.
Well, I think softscaping and fencing will be a good thing. And, and some of this is TBD, to be very realistic about it. We, we hope that people won't park in our parking spots. We hope that the trash will be manageable, but there, we need to talk about this now. We can't go back in two years and say, okay, 7-Eleven, you need to help us pick up trash.
Okay. Mr. Redmond?
That's what the dumpster enclosure is for.
So, dumpster picker-upper trucks do not ensure that tops are backed down on dumpsters.
Well, okay.
And this is a larger, a large-sized 7-Eleven with a emphasis on onsite food preparation. So, it's the new style 7-Eleven. So, we believe that there will be more Big Gulp cups and wrappers and whatever it is they're cooking.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Another speaker?
Yes, one more speaker, Joel Cho.
Thank you, everyone. May I take this off?
Yes, please.
Okay. I do have a two-shot. And thank you for all the city's leaders and officers and experts, and allow me to say, I'm one of the 14th owners in, next door, Newtown Professional Park. I'm there for 35 years, close to 35 years. I'm in, live in this region. Actually, I bought my first house near the Newtown Larry Gas Station there, a townhouse. I lived there for six years, but my office there, so, yeah, before I became self-practicing, I'm an architect, that's my career. And I work for a firm called V V K R, the largest architecture design firm. They are office, branch office located in Cogar Center, now it's International Corporation. So, I'm familiar with the area. I'm familiar with the 7-Eleven. They used to have three 7-Eleven on this street. There's another one close to Larry Station. So, I know their business extent. They are nice, nice people, and they run good business, people like them. I welcome they build a new one here. I'm excited. But I do have some opinion now. Doesn't mean I against the reasons. I want to modify their drawing, design, because use my acknowledgement. If I can give, contribute a little bit, and also offer to the city to consider this, I think will be very helpful for this one. Okay. The first one, the Donald mentioned something for the, for this one, the first four, four concerns was, were written by me, so she include, but I just tried to add a little bit since, in, for this hearing. Okay. The, the first thing is, is the, can you put that site plan again? Yeah. So, we have the major, consider this north side, okay, architectural north, okay, on the Newtown Road, and the west side is, how do you call this?
Princess Anne.
Princess Anne, okay. These two are most congested road here, okay? And if you go there maybe every day, in the morning or in the afternoon, always congested. The problem is that people make turns, okay? The car always stuck there, okay? And both side, okay? And both road. And this is really a, a good area for business, was the worst area for traffic. So, for the, for this, since, if you, if you see this drawing very clearly, okay, then see the photograph underneath, okay, it's vague. The current, our entrance is easement for both their properties, our property, has been there for more than 40, 50 years, and that's what's good location because...
Sir, I need to ask you to start wrapping it up, okay? See the red lights on?
My time's up.
Yeah, time's up. You can start, keep going, though. You can keep this...
I'm sorry, I'm really sorry. I didn't realize so quick. Okay. So, first is I wanted, the, the deceleration road, okay, on this side to entrance and this side to entrance, entering into this property, I think the city engineer should be, should pay attention to this one, because we, first, I think we should do a little bit of traffic study, okay? And when you add 10, 10 bays of this gas, gasoline stations, fuel stations, that increase a lot, and convenience, increase a lot of traffic. That really can stop the traffic during the rush hour, okay? And that's since, first is, second is, their new entrance on the Newtown Road, actually, it's a new entrance, it's not a current entrance. They load entrance, so our entrance become, like, make a U-turn into their property and then out. They also make the entrance narrower, like 20-feet one. Now, current one is 35-feet one. It's good one, it's not only for the entrance to this property, also from this way, people enter their properties and our properties. So, that Donald didn't mention that.
Okay. I do appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any questions?
I'm sorry.
No, no problem, no problem. I will say, though, I have talked to traffic engineering, because I have some, I had a little bit of concern, some, what they've come up here with is, I think, is very, a very good situation, because they're, Mr. Beeman will explain why the building really needs to be like this. Not only is part of the Newtown comprehensive plan, of our comprehensive plan, but we're doing, it's an urbanized type of feel where the back of the building is up against the road and the, the gas pumps on the inside. So, it's something we're, we do in the city.
Yeah. You, you know, this is my profession too. I develop architecture site plan for all the developers and the government agencies, including federal agencies. I do have a lot of experience and also familiar with ordinance and laws. So, when you develop things, not just from those two parts, also from a setting point of view, and also for the neighborhood consent. So, there's a lot of changing, people don't, usually don't realize when they build a new facility, that will increase a new problem too, and also new advantage, the good things too. So, basically, we try to do a minimum, you know, the problems and...
I understand.
Yeah. So, this is the way, I want to contribute something. I, I totally agree, if I can just further do this, to have, have a developer, and all they need is have a really good experience, how do you call this, architects or engineers, develop, make a new architecture site plan. It's more appropriate to follow ordinance, and that, that's my, that's my major contribution.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you for everything, for opportunity.
Mr. Beeman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I did want to say that we do appreciate all the, the feedback we've received from the condo association, and I spoke with Mr. Cho before the hearing today as well and gave him my contact information, and we certainly look forward to continuing our conversations with them and, and working through these issues and giving them additional information. A couple of things I just wanted to point out, with respect to the, the trash issue and the buffering and so forth, I did want to add that, I think has been mentioned, currently there is no buffering between the, the properties now. We're proposing a, a double layer across the entire rear of the site and evergreen landscaping, and then also a fence. And then with respect to the dumpster itself, there will be a third layer of buffering with the, with the dumpster enclosure that the city requires as well, which is, which is on the elevations. With respect to parking, we are currently overparked. We're proposing more parking than is, is required under the code minimum, and all of that, of course, is pushed up against the building on the opposite side of the site, so I don't think there's much reason or opportunity for folks to park on, on the condos property. In addition to that, there will be a fence dividing those properties, which will, will, you know, dissuade folks from doing that as well. And then, in terms of access and, and traffic, this use is, is pretty much a pass-by use, where most of the traffic that uses this site is already on the corridor and is entering the site. Doesn't create a lot of destination trips and a lot of new users on the, on the corridor. Additionally, from a traffic perspective, we are proposing a new deceleration right lane in on, on Newtown Road, which will be helpful. And of course, the two entrances, instead of five, will also make it a safer, more efficient traffic pattern. So, those are kind of the, the things I wanted to emphasize or add. Thank you.
Any questions? Yes?
The, the Newtown Road access point that's there now...
Yes, ma'am.
Is that currently on this property?
Yes, ma'am. There are, there are actually a couple of them on Newtown Road currently, and the, the access that the condominium uses, which was described a few minutes ago, is, is currently on the strip center property, I believe, which is part of this larger development.
So, they're still driving on the property...
That's my understanding, yes.
Now? It's just getting moved a little bit, like, they're, it's not like they weren't and then now they are.
That's my understanding, and I'm looking at our engineer to confirm for me, but I believe that's the case. Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so there's a, there is an ingress-egress easement currently?
Yes, sir.
And is it, it's going to be replatted to be...
So, the, the intention is to leave their access open, is not to disturb their entrance. Of course, we have, you know, the easement to contend with and the, and the language in the easement, but also city regulation. So, between those two, we're, we're going to arrive at a solution which pleases the city and the condo association, but certainly the intent is not to affect their, their access at all.
Any other questions? Yep.
So, the dumpster?
Yes, sir.
I, I kind of feel for them, but at the same time, that just seems like the right spot for the dumpster. I mean, you could put it up against the roadways, I'd...
I think it's a natural fit.
There's, there's the buffering right there, I, I don't...
Yeah, no, I, there are limited opportunities because we're on two rides of way, and it's such an important corridor, and so that does seem like the natural fit. And I think we've tried to address that with the three layers of buffering, and, and as, as Ms. Turner mentioned, the, the evergreens that are intended to be planted along the entirety of that back line will grow to 10 to 15 feet, so it should provide a nice buffer. Hopefully, they won't even see the dumpster, not a lot of opportunity for things to blow on the site or anything like that.
What about the fuel? She mentioned about the fuel tanks.
Yes. So, fuel tanks located right adjacent to the canopy. I understand from our engineer, those will meet all the current safety regulations, will be double-walled with a monitoring system and so forth. So, it's, it's a, it's kind of a, a new world with, with gas stations, and there's a, a lot of protections that are built into the required codes.
So, those protections would protect against fumes from the benzene and from potential hazards of, you know, risk for fire?
Correct.
Just about, okay.
Ms. Oliver?
So, you mentioned the fence, which is not in the application, but you all are going to add that in between now and council.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you describe the height of the fence and what kind of fence are you all...
We are proposing six feet on the fence, and, and the reason for that, that's a, that's a good, high height of a fence, but also it'll be backed up by the 10 to 15 feet of, of evergreen landscaping. We have not decided on a material yet, but...
Any other questions? Nope. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll close this and open it up for discussion. Let's go first. Anybody? Mr. Redmond?
I move for approval of the application.
We have a motion for approval, we have a second.
Second.
A motion for by Mr. Redmond, a second by Mr. Akraz.
Vote is open.
What's that?
Hold on, Bobby.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bobby.
I think Ms. Oliver was getting to a good point. It was said on the record, but it was probably to assure that we get what is being proposed by the applicant, we should vocalize those conditions. So, I think we should probably add that a six-foot solid fence shall be added to the southern property line.
Oh, that's not on the conditions already?
No.
Oh, I thought it was.
Uh-uh.
I'm more than happy to restate mine.
And then, was the landscaping, the double landscaping in, in the application?
It is shown, but not the minimum height. So, I would, I would also suggest that there's another condition that would state that the landscaping along the eastern, I'm sorry, the eastern property line shall be allowed to grow and be maintained at a minimum height of 10 feet.
Thank you.
Can you tell that?
Sort of. Did you all not talk beforehand, though? It's kind of what my question is.
I think that was a quickly changing situation.
Yeah, it was evolving, so we, I communicated to Marcel, but we were, I told her I intended to address that.
Okay. Let's see. You might have to give me some crib notes. I move approval of the application with the addition of two conditions. One is that there be a, a, all right, help me out.
Six-foot.
Six-foot property fence. Thanks, six-foot fence along...
On the eastern boundary, eastern.
On, along the eastern boundary, and landscaping on the, which boundary?
Eastern.
Thank you, eastern boundary, which will grow to a height of no less than 10 feet.
10 feet.
I said 10 feet.
Oh, I didn't hear you, sorry.
All right.
10 feet. Thank you.
We have a motion by Mr. Redmond, second by Ms. Akraz.
Vote is open. A recorded vote of 10 in favor, zero against. Agenda item number one has been recommended for approval with conditions amended.
Thank you. All right. Any other, any, any, any news? Anything at all? Anybody want to talk about anything? No, we're all good. All right, we got our turn.